The county should work with restoration project proponents to help identify funding sources and mitigation sites if needed, and help ensure that restoration projects don't cause significant impacts. However, when an ecologically beneficial restoration project would cause a potentially significant impact, the county should apply the same mitigation requirements it uses to ensure that all projects' significant habitat impacts are mitigated to the maximum extent feasible. The significant adverse environmental impacts of any project must be adequately mitigated. Habitat compensation mitigation ratios are higher than one to one because it's difficult or impossible to recreate the habitat that is lost and biological diversity from scratch in an area of the same size that was impacted. When ecological restoration projects result in adverse impacts, such as conversion of one habitat type to another, or loss of raptor nesting in monarch butterfly trees, even if these projects are overall ecologically beneficial, they may result in a significant impact nonetheless, and must -- an impact that must be mitigated to the maximum extent feasible under SEQA. SEQA does not permit -- and I'm wrapping up here with this quotation from our comments to the staff. SEQA does not permit a double standard for mitigation of impacts based on the nature of a project, and neither can the county's SEQA thresholds or mitigation guidelines. Standard mitigation must ensure that mitigation of projects' impacts is in compliance with SEQA, and cannot allow for certain projects to not fully mitigate their significant impacts to the maximum extent feasible. I think that sums up our position quite well. We do not support the proposed reduction mitigation standards. We are concerned it will set a precedent that will be applied to all projects throughout the county to reduce the mitigation standards for all projects, and therefore, we don't want to go there and oppose this proposed policy for the reasons stated. I am available for questions if you have any. I'd be happy to answer them.
It doesn't appear any right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Troutwine, thank you. Ms. Merritt?
So, I'm the ecologically concerned farmer. And, very nice document, but if you want to encourage landowners, farmers along the San Inez River, for example, to do beneficial restoration, this will do you no good at all. This is just more of the same. And, the only thing that's going to encourage landowners to undertake restoration is if you make the permitting process easier. And, we have, right now, two going on on the river, one at Barbara Thorne's property, and one at Jose Bear's, and both are being conducted by some nonprofit organization. When I talked to Jose, he said, "I told them I would help, but I would not deal with the permits." And Jose had lost seven acres of land, and he said, "I'll help, I'll give them my D6, but I won't deal with the permits." So unless the permitting process is easier, this is ineffective. So, thanks.
Ms. Merritt, you understand, it's not just the county permits that are involved in some of these projects.
And that's the issue. And... That's the issue, and even here, it's someone stated sustainable conservation is leading an effort to develop a permit coordination, and without permit coordination, individual landowners can't do this. They can't go to Fish and Game, and then to grading, and why, they don't have to go to grading if they have an NRCS, but then they have to go to Army Corps, and then they have to go to water quality, and there's six, I think, right? Seven? If you're on a river? And, it's great, yes, let's encourage beneficial restoration.
This doesn't do it.
But I don't think this does it.
Okay, thank you. Michael Feeney is our last speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Cooney, members of the commission. I'm Michael Feeney, Executive Director of the Land Trust for Santa Barbara County. And, I guess we were involved in the genesis of this report and discussion today, last summer, when we appealed a permit condition on our Royal Honda Fish Passage project that the staff mentioned. I would echo what Commissioner Brown said, and the last speaker said about this change will be hopefully somewhat helpful to the process of encouraging people to do their own part, to fix up the environment on their property, and to work with nonprofits and grant agencies to do that. But, streamlining and making the permit process easier is much more important even than this, and that's not your topic today, but I'll just echo that concern. I think it's important to understand that we're talking about a unique class of projects here that are intended to create a net benefit to the environment, and that have to be done in an environmentally sensitive location. You can't repair or enhance a degraded environmentally sensitive area without working in that area. You can build a bridge or a subdivision and avoid those resources as much as you can, but you can't avoid working in the environmentally sensitive area and disturbing it if it needs restoration. I think the definitions in the guidelines that staff has prepared are pretty tight, will be pretty hard to meet for most projects. If a project does have significant impact beyond what's allowed in these definitions, it's going to face greater mitigation and a more difficult permit path. The logic here is that if you're going into a degraded environment, and the purpose of the project is to make it better, you're creating a net benefit, not an impact to the environment. And as long as you take what was there and make it better, you shouldn't have to do compensatory mitigation above and beyond making better what you're setting out to do. In our case, we were disturbing some upland habitat, was actually the Caltrans Highway berm that had been built in the 40s and seeded with native plants, was never originally habitat, was created by humans. But we had to disturb it to create an access road and a staging area to get to the wetland and the creek bottom to do the work. We were going to put back everything that was disturbed in better condition with brand-new plants. We were going to expand the wetland area, the lagoon at the bottom of the creek, and create highly valued wetland habitat for endangered species, for the Tidewater gobies, for the steelhead, Southern Steelhead, that was deemed to be of high importance to Fish and Game and the Coastal Conservancy, that gave us $1,800,000 to do the project. And we were told by the county, in order to do that, because we were disturbing an acre and a third of upland that we were going to put back in the same condition or better than it was, we had to find four acres elsewhere to mitigate. And, there was no way we could do that. Our funding sources weren't going to pay for that. There was no room on the project site to do it. We would have to go find another property, find new money to mitigate, in order for the privilege to improve the environment, to create a net benefit. And, the logic just defied us, defied our funding sources. In fact, when we did our appeal, both Coastal Conservancy and Fish and Games said if we didn't appeal the condition, they were going to appeal it to the Board of Supervisors. So we went ahead and filed the appeal, and the board initiated this process to try and come up with a more rational way of solving these problems. Again, I think the nature of these problems is that they mitigate themselves on-site, and to require compensatory mitigation on top of that for a project that's creating a benefit to the environment just defies logic. I don't think anyone's intent, in all the discussions I've been part of, is to say that we want to go to one-to-one mitigation for all impacts on all projects in the county. And I think that there are a lot of landowners that we're working with now on projects who would do things and do these restoration projects, but not if they're told, "We're working with the landowner to do bank stabilization on a creek, and remove Arundo, the Giant Reed, plant willows, restore the area," and involves three acres of creek bank work. If we told those owners, "We can do that, but you also have to let us restore nine acres in order to meet the three-to-one mitigation requirements," they'd kick us off the ranch. They would not want to talk to us. So if you're going into a project that's going to enhance the environment by definition and create a net ecological benefit, this doesn't seem to be setting a bad precedent, and it's something that hopefully will help get more environmental enhancement projects done. Thank you.
One question, Mr. Feeney.
I have a question for you. There's this, I agree with you on the one-to-one ratio, but I understand we're changing the word from area to value, and I have some concern, I wonder if you have any concern, about who makes the determination that we have equal value from the beginning of the restoration to the end of the restoration? I'm just curious, since you are involved in doing this.
And I guess I would respond, Mr. Chair, that that's a question really for the biologists to answer, because they have the expertise to do that. In the situation that we were familiar with, there's lots of coastal sage scrub habitat, there's very little coastal lagoon habitat that supports endangered marine species, and I think almost any biologist you would ask would say, "It's better to create more coastal lagoon, even if it's the expense of a little bit of coastal sage scrub." The net area of environmentally sensitive habitat didn't change, we just changed the mix of habitat in that environmentally sensitive area to make it function better ecologically.
Commissioner Brown, you had a question?
Yeah. Michael, in your case, where you took an area and you basically, the habitat, the entire habitat was sort of benefited by your preservation activities. You changed, as you'd indicated, upland, whatever, to the wetland. But, as I read this, it's possible that you could take an area and X amount, and only restore X minus Y. And based upon this criteria, there would be greater value, but as Brian has indicated, well, what happens to the total area that is not restored? It seems like you should be doing something to that as well. That's not making additional, it wouldn't require three more acres, it was just making sure that whatever area you did take, and if you changed it to a wetland, that the other area would be restored as well. It's not increasing it, but under this definition, it seems like it's diminishing, in some ways, a particular habitat, even though a part may be changed to a wetland. I mean, I'm talking, we're talking nuance here, but maybe you could comment on that.
I would try to. I think it is kind of a nuance. I think it's rare that you would be decreasing the area of habitat. You might just be changing one habitat type to another habitat type, and that was what we were getting at, not that you should be allowed to diminish the physical area of habitat by putting, you know, concrete in there or something. So I don't disagree with your comment.
Do you have a question of this witness?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Mr. Feeney, hello. Aside from upholding the notion that no good deed goes unpunished, you were part of the genesis of this. What's missing? Is there areas where this could go further than it does? I'm just interested.
Hi, Commissioner Jackson, I'm not sure I would want to take it any further than staff has taken it so far. I think that there's a fair degree of consensus among the interest groups, the agencies, that'll also regulate these projects, and the staff, that this is at least a step in the right direction that will be beneficial. As I said before, there's a lot more that could be done to develop a set of standards, and procedures, and monitoring requirements that are proactive and promoted by the county, and if you do a project that complies with those standards, it should be easier and less time-consuming and less costly to get a permit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Feeney. All right. That's all the speaker slips we have. If there's anyone else that didn't have a chance to speak on this matter, it doesn't appear there is anyone, so we'll come back to you, Mr. Ward, for your final comments.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we've provided, in your staff report, information regarding permit processing and SEQA, what SEQA exemptions exist today, that talk about habitat restoration and replacement. Those exemptions are listed, and that was to try to provide you some degree of comfort on how future applications coming in for a beneficial project would be reviewed. It did not conclude that there would be no SEQA process. Depending on the scope of the project, there may very well be a SEQA process and document related to that project. So I think that addresses the question as far as SEQA. The focus for Ms. Merritt's comment in regards to, "This really isn't creating a permit process, or making a permit process easier," you're correct, there is no change to permit process. We did reference that consolidated permit program that is underway, and that's going to be noted for the board as well, because that's really been picking up some degree of speed. Outside of current county staff, we provided some comments in regards to their program, and a programmatic level environmental document that they're working on, and we anticipate, per their schedule, that probably in January or so, they will move forward with that effort. And part of that will include letting the board know about that, and making sure that they're comfortable with that being part of a work program moving forward. The goal is to address exactly what Ms. Merritt describes, some way to reduce the level and time associated with all the regulatory agencies that have some authority in a permit related to doing something that's beneficial on the ground. And I think, the way Mr. Feeney described this unique class of project, I think that is the biggest distinction in what we're trying to achieve by this reference definition and requirements in the SEQA documents. Explain why these projects inherently that are proactive to restore degraded habitat is the objective, and our ability to define that in our SEQA documents is our best approach to meet the intent of the board's direction. Hopefully, meet the intent of the board's direction as we go forward to them in December.
Mr. Ward, in item number 10, I couldn't resist bringing to your attention, the reference is a restoration project on the property owner, and I think what you mean is on the property of the owner. So I would suggest putting owner after the, so it reads, "The owner of property on which the beneficial restoration project is located," right? So it's just a subject issue. If there are no further questions, there are questions. Commissioner.
I just have one. I just have a problem that there's no definition of value. I understand what area is, it's, you know, it's a product of two numbers. I understand the concept where you're saying that if we're, I could see where you could take a 10-acre parcel and destroy it and create only five acres, but the five acres is so much more valuable than the 10 acres was before, they're equal. But I have some concern that, without value being defined, you know, it's very subjective, who makes the determination that you have a one-to-one ratio when we're talking about value as opposed to area?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I think ultimately, it would be whoever the project decision-maker is, that would make it, with some advice from the biologist. I would have a hard time saying, "This habitat's more valuable than this one, which is more valuable than this one," in a really clear rule, because it kind of is situational.
I just have some concern, because it's not defined in here, and I just think it's problematic in the future, if there was some way to have that definition, or it's consultation with the county and the biologist, and equal value, just to me, it's a future problem that's going to happen.
I understand.
Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Ward, how many projects has the, how many beneficial ecological restoration projects has there been in the county in the last five years that have gotten a permit?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, you did ask about that yesterday, we spoke on the phone, so I did try, as quickly as I could, to try to track down some of that information from both of our offices, North County and South. A little bit difficult to do, but there is a range of projects that included the Arundo eradication project, this was for San Roque Creek, so Royal Borough, the Royal Honda Project, which we've talked about, the El Capitan Storm Repair Project, this was a county parks project, the Kyoto Creek, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, this is a tributary of San Inez River. Improvements to bridges to improve fish passage was what that project did. So it's a little bit, some projects include development components, but would meet the intent of this program that talked about, you could have a culvert replacement that is providing a beneficial environmental result.
And do we know what the mitigation standards were in these projects?
Not in all circumstances, in the timing to try to produce this. The ones where I have reference, the Carpinteria Bridge Project, which is in progress right now, lists five, 10, and 15 to one, depending on the species, for that particular project, but it's still underway. Let's see, hold on here, let's see if I got anything else that lists. Yeah, most of them. Western Galleta Slough Wetland Enhancement Project, but I don't have the mitigation ratios.
Commissioner Brown, I don't want to cut you off, but where are you going with that?
Well, I'm just trying to figure, you know, I understand why the board was concerned and set staff down this path to try to make this process easier, but I think, as we've heard, that the permit path is not different, it's just basically the mitigation standard that's different, and we're changing some definitions about, that Mr. Troutwine brought up, about area versus value, and, you know, I do have some concerns based on that, in terms of Michael Feeney's testimony, that, you know, when he did it, he did, his area wasn't reduced, he restored both areas. So, I guess I'm just having some difficulty with sort of where we are in dealing with this particular document, and I don't, for me, I'm not there yet. I think there could be some further refinement, and I realize you're not going to be able to get every single project, because they're all going to be different. But I, I just, you know, currently, I can't support it, just because I have some concerns that we're being very short-sighted here.
Mr. Chair, if I could just try to answer the question about value versus area again. I think, to me, it was quite clear in reading the guidelines, that the purpose and the expectation is that beneficial ecological projects restore, expand, enhance, or recreate. So I don't think we saw a situation where the area that was being restored would be reduced. It was the mix, and it was, and that got to the value. You might have an area that was half wetland, half upland at the beginning of the process, as Mr. Feeney indicated, and at the end of the process, it was three-quarters wetland and a quarter upland. And his assertion, and one that I think we would agree with, is that's an enhancement in value, but it's not a reduction in the area, and I don't think that that was contemplated in the way the guidelines are drafted, a reduction in total area.
I wonder if that can be made clearer?
I'm sure it could.
Okay. You know, I can support that, if there's not any net reduction.
Commissioner Blau?
I was going to suggest, we should change it to area and value. Clearly, you're not giving me any example of reducing the area, so I see no reason to take the word out, but if you want to say area and value, then I think it makes sense to me.
I think the reason that the words were switched is that some people would say, "Well, you've reduced the upland habitat, but you haven't reduced the overall area." So I think we can insert some language that would make that clear.
I do agree with Commissioner Blau, that if we don't, you're going to have the decision-maker on a case-by-case basis deciding value, and, you know, it's, the applicant's going to have one idea of the value exchange, and the decision-maker's going to have to get expertise to counter that. That's an accident waiting to happen. Commissioner Lancy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When they clear the willows along, inside the San Inez River, do they have to find a place to mitigate that? Or is that just a passage for water that's cleared without mitigation?
Oh, I really, Mr. Chair, don't want to step into this one.
All right. Commissioner Blau?
Just as a technical matter, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this letter from the U.S. Department of Interior as part of the record. Before I finish that, just so we all know, we don't normally accept letters that are late and put them into the record, however, since this is only a recommendation to the board, there is plenty of time for the board to thoroughly review it before they make their decision, so I'll make that motion to accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I want to get that letter in front of me here, if I can.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I believe in your rules. It's on non-legislative items that the rule applies, and this would be a legislative item, and so it's not necessary to make the motion.
Then I withdraw the motion, so we're consistent.
All right. Commissioners, what do you want to do today with project? Do you want to see some language at a future time?
I would like to see staff come back, perhaps on consent, where we have a chance to look at the language, or unless staff is...
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I think it's pretty simple. Aside from the language changes that we already showed you in writing, there's just two additional changes, and then Ms. Chair Cooney's wording change for clarity. So I think it's pretty simple.
And how are you treating the value issue?
On item requirement number two, that first sentence, to add a pen to it, so the "beneficial ecological restoration project restores, expands, enhances, or recreates the existing or previously existing strike native habitat as in the affected area, but no net loss in total habitat area," period.
But I think you have to also change number four. No?
Hold on, it's on the other page. Then it would just be added in, "No net loss of habitat value or area." So do an or, and I guess it's stated there twice in number four, so it would need to The other one we talked about was requirement number six, which dealt with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and in that one, it would be added additional sentence that says, "Project applicants are encouraged to consult with these agencies." In an early consultation, I guess, I want to say. Period.
You may want to wordsmith that a little bit. It's not a difficult concept, but it can be improved.
And that's part of your process? I mean, you need to see that they have done that, or you, how does that work in reality?
Well, the encouragement, and from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, is that they're sort of on notice. People are noticed, if you're doing one of these projects, that you're proactive, our regular permit process, if the activity requires a permit, would analyze this question and do that process of consultation and documentation in an environmental document.
So you get something that that has occurred? You get some document that that has occurred?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Blau?
Just a question, when does this go before the board, if we approve it today?
December 4th.
So there's another meeting, we have another meeting before that occurs. So I'm just going to suggest that we get a copy of this modified document with the minutes for our next, the minutes of our meeting, and we'll approve the minutes, and if this document is part of the minutes, if there's any wordsmith changes or things we don't like, we can correct them when we approve the minutes. So I'll make a motion that we approve, or that we send this off to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval, with the changes that you've outlined today on this document, changing, deleting the Nord Native and other changes that you have proposed, and that this come back before us with our minutes for our next meeting for final approval.
Mr. Chair, if I could just suggest, we don't usually turn your minutes around in a week. We usually take two, and I think we may be pushing...
We have the meeting on the 28th.
Oh, the 28th, oh, okay.
That'll be fine.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood, I was thinking the 14th. Got it.
Yeah, so we're not continuing it, we're actually making the motion to approve staff's recommendation with the changes.
And you'll just approve the specific language in the minutes. Perfect.
If there's a change, we can make them when we approve the minutes, and that'll be enough time to change it before it goes before the board.
That's great.
Do we have a second to Commissioner Blau's motion? All right. Further discussion, Commissioner Brown?
You know, I just have a comment. I think it's important that, when this goes before the board, that staff explain that this doesn't change the permit path.
I think we've missed...
You will do that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, I think we did in the board letter already.
Oh, okay.
We've tried to make that very clear.
Okay.
We don't want to set the expectations too high on this change.
All right. Ms. Soplin?
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Roll carries five zero.
All right, thank you very much. This concludes the Planning Commission's business of the meeting of November 7th. We will see everyone in Santa Maria next week on the 14th. Meeting adjourned.